...are looking for, considering all of the quantitative data that they have to analyze. Another exciting course is the personal finance course, which we're waiting to hear on a grant for that. And that's like a very hot topic right now in terms of, you know, whether or not it will be required down the line in all, you know, nine to 12 schools. And then something like modern band is an exciting course because it broadens the profile of students who engage in band. Modern band is more around like occult, like including more cultural pieces of music and different instruments as well. That's all I got.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Molly. I just want to add that this, you know, just thanking all of the educators, students, and parents that have been contributing, right, to the feedback that we need to just do some of this. This was some of the foundational work. Program of studies really lived at each of the high schools and wasn't a district comprehensive document. And so when Molly started the presentation, she pointed out, right, that there was a need to have one comprehensive document because what we're looking at is the student experience. So what a student is able to take at one high school, they should be able to take at another high school. And then as we create pathways where there are different program of studies, there still needs to be a very clear understanding for students and parents to be able to make the choice, like, do I want to be a STEM student, or do I want to be a, you know, student that is more involved in languages, or, you know, humanities, or do I want to do performing arts as a focus? So as we go through these changes, right, this will continue to be a resource for all of us to make sure that students are able to make the choices that they want to make. And what exciting courses await, right? It's exciting to see your path between six through 12. Like, what could I possibly take? What is engaging? What are the things that interest me? What do I want to explore? This doesn't exclude, obviously, electives that each of the content areas will still continue to offer, but it does offer a more focused way of looking at how we look at each content area. So I just wanted to add that to, so that we have a clear understanding on how we're using this document. It's been a tremendous amount of work. It's been in the works for...
Seven months?
At least.
At least.
At least seven months. And it will continue to be worked on. And once we are closer to a draft, I would say in the month of March, maybe late February, early March, we'll look at bringing the whole thing back to the committee for review. So.
Mary Peña, Mary Reed, Mary Galey.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate all the hard work and all the stakeholders, everyone involved. One of the questions I had, are you meeting with the DEI team, Bobby Bishop, to, when you're...
Yep, and the data, yeah, I skipped through my notes, but I thank you for asking that. Yes, I want to just publicly thank everyone because to Dr. Alvarez's point, this was a lot of hours, a lot of different workshops. We had the MLE office, the SPED office, innovation office, principals, guidance counselors, department heads, assistant directors, teachers are involved. We're trying to get some feedback from some students as well. So that is the point, to ensure that there's equity. And so one of the conversations really is like, what are the barriers to different students being able to access advanced coursework? And so we had a robust conversation around what are the prerequisites that were requiring? And at one time, it was a grade, just a grade, but as you know, grades are very subjective. And without a uniform grading policy, you know, you can lead to just some implicit bias there. So we're looking at a different array of courses for entry.
And that kind of almost answers some of my, the next question, but how are you, what methods are you using to have more parent engagement? What ideas have you been...
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Parent engagement, student voices.
Yes. So we have a few. So one thing is, what we'd like to do is create a video around how to access the portal. And then we already have a captive audience because our guidance counselors go, our, the high school guidance counselors go down to schedule the middle school students every spring, so they have the entire eighth grade, they go through the entire eighth grade. So we're going to take that opportunity to workshop those students on getting into the portal early. And then we're also, the guidance counselors will start to work with their others, the upper level students, who many of them do use the portal, but we want to get in the transcript, the unofficial transcript, so they can be tracking their own progress as well. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
And last, are we working on getting grants, especially for the innovative classrooms and studies and works that we want to bring up?
Yep, and so with the programming here, so you saw the biotechnology, the personal finance is a grant as well. So there are grants connected specifically to coursework and course development.
There's a lot of federal and state grants that we need to...
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, especially with CTI.
All right, thank you, that's all.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Mary.
Thank you, Molly. I was very excited when I saw the agenda because last year, when I was looking through this, I honestly thought there was a lot of counterintuitiveness when it came to some of the programs of study, so very excited about that. My first question is, so does this require, like, is, are the courses changing in themselves? Does this require new curriculums, different educators, things like that? Is it more of a reorganization of the whole thing?
Yeah, thank you. So it's a little bit of both. Some of the courses are being updated, right, and more modernized. And then some of the courses are going to be newly developed. However, all of the courses, even the newly developed courses, lie in the standards that already exist. So like genocide is a good example of a course that we're looking to develop right now, that is, that all of the materials in that course align with the standards.
Sure, so it's not a big, yeah.
Yeah.
My other question was, I actually was talking with a couple of parents a couple of weeks ago, and they were talking about how they felt like their students weren't in the right programs of study. Is there any work being done to ensure that students are placed, whether it be level interest? Because I think it's a combination of student interest, you know, guidance intervention, and, you know, parent advice as well. Is there any work being done to ensure they're in the right coursework?
Yeah, so I'm not sure what those parents mean, so I would love to hear more about that. But in terms of, that's the idea of really engaging the parents and the students in the program of studies via the work with the guidance counselors, because you're right, there are recommendations to be made based on interest and skill level and aptitude. But as well, you know, sometimes an interest in something that you may not, it may not appear that you have an aptitude for could be a bigger motivator factor, motivating factor. And so those conversations generally happen in the guidance, in, you know, the world of guidance and the meetings that they have with families. But maybe if we're doing the on-the-road show, we can really get that feedback from families while we're presenting this new way of being involved.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mary Galey.
Good job. Thank you for the large print. One, I have like a few questions.
Okay.
But on phase one, I'm not familiar with the acronym DAAT.
Oh, that's the new data center. So it's not the data center, actually, it absorbed the data center. So it's the data accountability and assessment team. That's under Dr. Shorter. Sorry.
No, it's okay. I just, I wasn't familiar, so I asked.
Yep, sure.
That's my job. Okay. This summer, a person, a parent, wanted to know about what are we doing to replace studies? What are we doing to challenge his daughters or his son? I won't say. But anyway, so this, I think, is going to bridge that gap, and I'm really happy to see that. And it's worth the seven months. I'm really happy because then it will be more challenging for everybody. This is great. And the parents and student voices involvement is really, really good for me to hear because I hear otherwise. So I'd rather have them be able to talk to you guys directly and let you know what their needs based are. I'm excited about the new curriculums coming in. I think that out-of-the-box thinking and innovation is the way to go, and our district is in for a treat. It might be challenging because anything, anything that is worth its while, you have to work hard at, you have to be challenged. And having that will make you a better individual, make you learn more, make you happier, because if you find a career that you absolutely love, and you know this, if you find it, then it's not even like working.
Right.
It's like, oh, they pay me to do this? And I used to say that, believe it or not, every day that I taught, except on certain days. The create a communication plan to share ownership and use with students, families, and teachers. How are you planning on doing that?
Yep, so we already...
For the guidance?
Yeah, we started to sketch that out with the team. So we have a monthly timeline for making that video that I talked about. That would be in different languages for, so that we're ensuring that all of our families are able to access it. And that video would kind of explain how families can engage with the program of studies, both on the technical side and just on the like conceptual side. And then having the guidance counselors and the family court, the family and community coordinators, supporting families around how to do some of this work.
So we'll find any gaps that we may have?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's so important.
But I do have to shout out the school leadership because the, it's really the school leadership that carries a lot of this work, and the principals have been hugely invested in this. So, you know, when it comes to families, when families need to reach out, they reach out to their principals and the school teams. So they, we really are excited that they're, they're very excited about this as well.
So for people that may be out there in TV land saying, yeah, sure, when is this going to happen? When can we plan on something like this going to happen, the spring, like next year?
Yep, February, March, right, in the, in that window between February and March, right? And as soon as we're ready to roll with this, we'll have it up on the website. So we're building out a curriculum and instruction website right now. Each of the assistant directors have built robust, like a robust platform with the standards, with links to it, and then this will be front and center. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, this is a very, this is the very basic, right, and foundational work that we needed to do. And now we'll start layering in, what are those innovative pathways that we are looking at with the school teams to continue to add to this? We have many tools and resources already that provide us with a lot of data and information about student aptitudes and strengths that we're looking for ways to use in a, in a more effective way, like NAVIANCE, like when we look at AP potential from PSAT reports, right, and we have the discussion around what student aptitude is. Because when we take a PSAT and even looking at the PSAT, maybe even eight, nine, right? So when you're taking it in middle school, you're already able to make informed decisions about, I would be great at, right, the social sciences, the language arts track, the math and science track. And so what are the things that I should be considering and looking at as that program of studies?
I guess you know, it's Mary Saturday.
Thank you, Molly, for your presentation, very robust as always. My question's around partnerships. When I think about program of studies, I think about, okay, how are we, how are we evolving with the workforce, right? How are we adapting to industry? As you talked about, like 10 years from now, the jobs, the skills that we're going to need to be successful might be different. What are we doing to ensure that we're aligning the right partnerships with our thoughts of how we phase this out?
Absolutely, yeah.
Or how we phase it in, really.
Sure, absolutely. So the innovation department, their team, was working with us in regards to the early college pathway. And then Dr. Alvarez just alluded to some other build-out that we're looking at. So we're right now investigating IB programming, the international baccalaureate programming, and what that could look like. So as we envision the different pathways, then would come in the community partners.
And as part of that, we're also looking at colleges and universities to help us develop, right? What are the pathways? What are the program of studies? And then possibly like future curriculum for some of those. Dr. Gardner has reached out to MIT for some of the STEM work that we're envisioning. She's reaching out to them, to the Sloan School of Business as well, to look at some of the development and financial technologies work that we want to do as well. And so as we work through, right, each of, what is that progression of courses? We're really starting with academia and also then including and bringing in, like, who are those workforce development? Is it GE? Is it, you know, pharmaceuticals? Is it, and inviting them in to see who wants to partner with us to support our work.
And I'd also just like to raise that when we talked about, when we were receiving feedback, we got some feedback from Lynn Vocational Technical Institute because they, they were saying in the first version of the draft, that it was very college-heavy in terms of how we had loaded the beginning entrance of the, and when you enter the document, we had like the different requirements for college. And so we actually moved those into the appendix because, as we know, vocational studies are incredibly lucrative and really fast-track into the workforce for people who really want to get into the job immediately, as opposed to like four years of studies. So that also, that voice and that piece is involved here as well. And you know, there's so many workforce partnerships with Lynn Tech that will be represented in this document.
That's my second question about TTE, actually, that's actually very, it's very important.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
That was my first place of employment in the Lynn Public Schools.
Mary Saturday.
Thank you for your presentation. I commend you and all your work that you've been doing. As a graduate of LPTI, I am super excited about this program of studies, to be honest. Just a question I was thinking of, is this also going to be implemented in, at Facto Larry?
Yeah, so Facto follows the same coursework that we have as well, and then they also will be, their specialized programming will be involved, it will be part of this program as well. But when you talk about like college preparation classes, they have the same.
Got it. Perfect. And then just a comment from personal experience. So my daughter's currently experiencing an overpopulated, you know, school, but at a different level because she's in lower class sizes because she's in honors. So I think that this is going to be great, being able to create more courses with diverse needs and advanced courses will definitely positively impact our children. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for you and everyone involved for the amazing work. Very exciting, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Great job, Molly.
Can I start over?
Next item is community schools.
There's a lot of us who are wondering if we could just stand and, teacher voices or pick up the microphones?
Yeah, I think we need...
You can't pick up the microphone.
Yeah, somebody's, I think we need to speak into the microphone for the broadcast.
You should take a seat.
You could take my seat.
Drive it all, don't it?
We'll rotate.
We'll rotate through the chairs, musical chairs. This is like improv, right, at its best.
Amy, get over here.
Kim is actually going to kick us.
You're good?
Yes, I'm going to kick you off. Okay. Okay, I want to introduce our presenters this evening. We'll be updating you on the progress and the evolution of Ford and Washington in their journey to become community schools. We have with us this evening Principal Amy Nerrick from the Ford School, Principal Anthony Frye from the Washington School, and then we have our community directors, Amy Cruniac from the Ford School, and Nina Hemza from the Washington School, and we have Sarah Link from the United Way. Before I move on, I wanted to send out a special thank you to Sarah, who has been an invaluable partner to Washington and Ford as well as the district. I wanted to thank her for her informed and thoughtful leadership in supporting the evolution of the community school model and framework within LPS. We thank you so much, Sarah. I will open up the presentation, we want to go to the first slide, by grounding us in the primary objective for these schools in choosing this pathway, and it is student achievement. Our first slide highlights data from the community school project in New York City. This data brings to life the potential and the positive outcomes of the community school strategy, including, but not limited to, higher attendance rates, lower chronic absenteeism, fewer discipline problems, improved academic performance, and a positive change in a student's trajectory to graduate. The benefits become even greater with time. Anthony and Amy will orient you to the community school strategy and framework and their alignment to LPS priorities. Washington and Ford community directors will highlight the partnerships and networks they are building that make their schools special and change the trajectory of their students. The directors will also discuss and inform for you early wins and emerging themes. Sarah will conclude and take us home and present the team's plans and actions moving forward. And I just want to acknowledge that this team is very grateful to the school committee for all your support.
I want to just take a moment to introduce my colleague Renee Omalade, who is also here with us tonight. She recently joined the United Way team as our senior director for community schools. Renee brings many years of work in Boston, most recently leading Boston's community school strategy. So we are thrilled to have her on the team and joining us and guiding us along the way as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Anthony, we're over to you.
Yeah, so Abby's going to read this, and then I'll get into the next one. You want to, into the mic. Into the mic. Thank you. We just wanted to share a quote with you, and it states that the community school strategy, and we stress that it's a strategy, it's not a program, it transforms a school into a place where educators, local community members, families, and students work together to strengthen the conditions for student learning and healthy development. As partners, they organize in-school and out-of-school resources, supports, and opportunities so that the young people can thrive.
So my piece of this is, first of all, well, thank you for having us here. This is amazing. You know, it's always amazing to be able to present the stuff that means so much to us in the buildings, the work we do every day for kids and for our families. We don't often, you know, get to show that to everyone, so this is a, you know, it's a real privilege for us to be here. We're going to start with the mission for LPS, the vision for LPS. These are exactly what we are trying to do in community schools. I don't think they could align any better. When you look at committing to providing our students with safe, inclusive places to learn and be seen, that's what we do at a community school. That's what we strive for. Our vision on strengthening community, I mean, obviously, that's in the title of what we're doing, working together so that students can thrive. The district goals of fostering, you know, the multilingual learners and proficiency, building inclusive community, integrating mathematics and literacy skills. This is what, you know, and Kim alluded to it in the beginning, achievement is the goal. Achievement is a goal, and building the community school is how we're going to get to that achievement, because we're going to reduce, we're going to, you know, take away the barriers, we're going to allow our families and our communities to know that this is what is important to us. And we'll stand on it together, and that will allow us to go far. So it, the alignment with the district is, you know, it couldn't have been written any better. So we're very thankful for that because it fits into exactly what we're trying to do at our buildings.
All right. Musical chairs. So we're going to talk a little bit about the guiding framework that is supporting all of this work. This is a relatively new framework that was launched last year in January, so those of you who were here in March saw this before. We're going to race through this so that you can really hear from the community school directors, the great work that they've been doing. So this framework was really built from a number of national organizations who are really leading the community schools movement across the country, the Brookings Institute, the Coalition for Community Schools, the National Center for Community Schools, and the Learning Policy Institute. So we take our guidance from them. And what you'll really see here is an ecosystem that we are building. This is not a checklist of programs and a checklist of things that we're doing. This visual will really build out and represent the framework that's guiding the community schools work here in Lynn. So at our center, this is our North Star, we are really focused on making sure that students thrive and flourish in thriving school communities.
And then when we're thinking about who drives the work, it's important for us to name our school-based folks, our community partners, our youth and families. And this is not a comprehensive representation of who drives the work, but we know that without these key players, community schools won't be successful.
Our next gear in this wheel are really the enabling conditions. So without really deep trusting relationships and this shared vision that we are all building, both across the district and within the two buildings, having inclusive decision-making and actionable data, we have so many pieces of data that we are looking at and so many different ways of looking at it, and that is really our guiding conditions.
And so the key practices of community schools are really, what are the six conditions that really should exist within a community school? And so there's four that have really been traditionally used. Our Department of Education uses it for a national federal community school grant, really centered around these top four of integrated systems of support, powerful student and family engagement, collaborative leadership, and expanded learning opportunities. But in this new community schools forward, what's really important are these last two, which are the culture of belonging, safety, and care. And when we're talking about that, we're not actually talking about it only for our students, but for everyone who's in a school community, the educators, the staff, the teachers, the social worker. Having that culture within the school building is really critical to its success, as well as the rigorous community-connected classroom instruction, which was great to be a part of that previous conversation because we can see where that interconnectiveness is throughout the work of the district.
And finally, we've got the supportive infrastructure. So this work cannot exist in the district alone, in a building alone. This is really how are we working to provide that supportive infrastructure across our ecosystem? So how are we really thinking about sustainable resources? How are we keeping all these partnerships live and active? What are our governance structures for engaging the community and parents in our decision-making? And you can kind of go around the circle and really see how each of these pieces of the infrastructure are so important in upholding our vision and our values. So now we're going to turn it over to Amy and Nina to show you a little bit about what this looks like in each of their buildings. Do you want the animation right up?
Oh, I don't know. All right, here it is. Okay. So the previous image before, without the connections, is your traditional school. All schools have these networks with the exception of a community school director. What sets community schools apart is the mutually beneficial relationships within these networks to make each entity stronger. We'd like to give a few examples of our community school strategies and how we are working to strengthen these networks as it relates to Ford and Washington. As part of the assets and opportunity assessment, we have been meeting with families one-on-one to gather collective feedback and empower family voice and choice. We have also incorporated our staff and teachers into the AOA process to encompass educator perspective. I can speak personally to Ford and how excited our teachers are about new ways to accelerate student learning. Additionally, our family liaison, who is here tonight, Ms. Martinez, has been an integral part of introducing and adapting to the community part of introducing and adapting to the community school strategy.
Okay, super, super. Hi. So I will echo everybody's thanks for having us here. We're very excited about this and the opportunity. And the district, as an integral member of this community school strategy, has been really fabulous. We're so grateful to the support we've received from our central office colleagues and folks throughout the district. And the fact that you're taking, you're investing energy in this strategy as a vehicle for improving the lives of our children and ensuring that they have the opportunity to thrive academically, socially, emotionally, all of that is fabulous. So we thank you for that. And our community partners are growing and growing and growing. When Amy and I started, there were a few in place already, and those have expanded. And they tell two people, and they tell two people, and they tell two people. And so we're very grateful that the area churches have been very supportive, restaurants, supermarkets, Stop &amp; Shop especially, has been remarkably generous. Staff donate for things like our clothing and houseware giveaways, and we're now, we now have partners with local estate sale companies and Flannery Handyman. They're donating things. So today, we had an event at Washington, and Amy had, is your event tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. We're giving away all sorts of stuff, which is just really fabulous, because the need is so significant. We think of Maslow's hierarchy of needs and making sure that folks have what they need. GE, the Y, Girls Inc., just, there's a long, long list, and we're very grateful and appreciative that it's growing. And when we think about partners also, it's not just that they're doing things for us, but that we are trying, we're finding ways to be supportive of them, and so it's mutually beneficial.
All right. So a team-based approach. Nina and I had the opportunity to attend the Community Schools Fundamental Conference in New York City back in October. We actually had some team members also with us. But perhaps the most impactful breakout session we experienced was a panel of superintendents and principals. Dr. Jocelyn Hively, superintendent in Bakersfield, California, stated, "Education is a team sport, and kids must win." This quote serves as a reminder that students need to be at the center of education, which is the philosophy of the community school strategy and also the vision for Lynn Public Schools. Equally impactful was two months later, when I was meeting with a parent from Ford. I wish I had her presentation, because it was 17 slides long, and it blew my mind. But she shared with me her dreams for her children's educational experience. The parallels between her vision and Dr. Hively's vision were clear. She stated, "But working together with parents, staff, and our community, it can happen. Community school for me means everyone working together as a village. There is no I in team. Teamwork makes the dream work." How empowering is it for our students and families to feel that they are choice-takers and decision-makers?
And our families share that. We say teamwork makes the dream work all the time. And this has provided an opportunity, this community school strategy has provided an opportunity for us to grow the capacity of parents in leadership roles. Folks are stepping up to help with all manner of things, and that makes them feel welcome in school, their children see them at school, and it's been very beneficial.
Early wins. We'd like to highlight some of our early wins, which have included a noticeable increase in our family engagement. This is evidenced by turnout at our parent cafes, school-based events, and willingness of families to volunteer for these events. Through the community school approach, we are able to leverage parents as leaders. And while we recognize there is still a significant amount of work to be done, the basic needs of our families to be done to meet the basic needs of our families and students, we have begun coordinated efforts to address concerns regarding food insecurity and clothing needs. These efforts have taken the form of takeaway food bags, food pantries, and clothing drive events.
And in our interviews and our interactions with families and staff, some needs have emerged. And attendance, you won't be surprised by. Lynn and many communities across the country are dealing with chronic absenteeism, chronic tardism. And so we're looking at ways to reward really good attendance and to incentivize attendance, a little bit of fun competition between grade levels and classes to, you know, let's get in here, we've got a lot of good stuff to do. And we're also looking at things like possibly providing some laundry, laundry facilities for families, so that if a kid doesn't have clean clothes, they're not coming to school. So we want to try to eliminate all those barriers that are keeping them from school. Safety and space is another theme. Neither of us have, neither of our schools have parking lots, and so the double parking with hazards on as people are stopping in all sorts of crazy places to get kids in and out is challenging. We have, at Washington, there's lots of deferred maintenance with water dripping in. We had to cancel a basketball game a few weeks ago because there was so much water on the gym floor. It was a slipping hazard for the children. So things like that, those kinds of things are emerging as we're talking with families. We're also very interested in trying to provide some opportunities for before-school and after-school opportunities for learning, arts, music, theater, sports, things that will be more exciting than math, or, not that math isn't, I love math, but not everybody loves math, right? So what's it going to be that gets that kid to get to school that day? And it might be, "I'll do math if I can play basketball," or, "I'll do that writing if I can be in the play," right? So those, those kinds of things. And language has come up as a really big interest, not just parents wanting to learn English, but the parents want their children to learn their home language, how to read and write in their home language. And our teachers want to learn the home languages. So Rosetta Stone coming to us is going to be so well-received. We're very excited about that. And I've been teaching a bunch of people how to use Duolingo. I'm on day 320, and I can't believe how much I've learned in three to five minutes a day. So I highly recommend it. Oh, before, before I get off the mic, I want to pose a challenge. How are you going to answer the question? So what is this community school thing, anyway? So I suggest you come up with your elevator pitch. Mine is, "Our community schools work to accelerate student learning by fostering partnerships with families and community members to create conditions where all kids are enabled to thrive." One sentence, but one long sentence. But what are you going to say when they ask you? So if you need my help, give me a call.
All right. So just a few things as we close out and get ready for questions. Looking ahead, we will do a deeper dive and really complete our asset and opportunity assessment, which is that deep data dive that Amy and Nina have been talking about. We're really looking at our broad network of community partners. Lynn is incredibly fortunate to have a wonderful set of nonprofit partners who are really eager to join in this work and really be unified under this strategy. So really thinking about what we're learning from that AOA process and bringing in the right community partners in each of the schools. And then to really hone in on what are our concrete goals that we are, that we are looking toward, and building our strategic plan to ensure that this is not just an initiative. This is a longtime strategy that we are all committed to deploying our resources to. And then continued learning and professional development. Renee talked about those six practices that really guide the community schools. We want to really look into those and make sure that we have all of the partners across the community and all of the faculty and families really versed in that language. We've got opportunities to attend in more national conferences to continue to learn from those around the country who are doing this work. So lots of good stuff ahead. Did you have anything you wanted to close this out?
Yeah, I'll just close this out a little bit. Sorry. Just a minute. So I just wanted to first, you know, officially thank everyone again. Welcome to the new members of this committee. I haven't met all of you yet. This is something that's very near and dear to the work that I've been doing in this city for 25-plus years. And when Dr. Alvarez and Ms. Powers presented this as, you know, Washington would be a nice spot to try this work, what I thought of was out of the shadows into the sunlight. This is a lot of work, and many of you who sit here know that we were doing in the shadows. We're taking care of our families, we're helping our students, we're creating environments that are ripe for learning, but oftentimes was at the opposition of whatever the common narrative was. Now we're in a space where we can work together. Achievement is the goal of all of this. Achievement is what's going to set our kids, our schools, going to set them off for, you know, and what achievement means to them. I'm not just saying, you know, you have to get As and Bs. We talked about that, right? It could be arts, it could be music, it could, you know, I'm just saying for them to be their best selves. So I just want this committee to know that this team is committed to the work we're doing. We will put our best foot forward every time we can. Children are at the center of the things we do, and nothing can really stop us. So I'm glad you're all on our team. You know, we appreciate you, we appreciate the support, and I really think it's going to impact our families in a huge way. So, thank you.
Thank you, and something to that. You know, we meet monthly as a team, and we talk a lot about the fact that this is not random acts of programming. So we are not making any decisions about next steps unless it's coming from the families, right? And so our directors are spending so much time meeting with the families one-on-one over Zoom, on the phone, to hear their feedback. And so that is what's driving everything we're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Remember Dugan, remember Peña, remember Castellanos?
All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. I'm very excited for this, and I hope I'm speaking for the whole committee when I say, you know, I fully 100% support the strategy. You know, just, we talk a lot about making schools safe places for kids to learn, and kids can't learn without that safe place, and this is really putting it into action. So it's very exciting for me, being an educator, and then also being on this committee and being passionate about the students of Lynn, to hear your passion too, Principal Fry, come out just now. So I do appreciate that, and, you know, and I, again, I hope I'm speaking for the whole committee when I, when I say they do too. I guess my questions are for Principal Fry and Eric. What do you guys think the best, or the biggest strength is that's come out of this so far?
I mean, right off the top, it's the, the voice of the families. We had, I mean, after the second meeting, we invited people in, you know, and I've been at the school for a few years now, so I do know my families. I think they feel comfortable with me and coming in. We didn't envisioning the future of Washington, and the families showed up and showed out. And we had interpreters in multiple languages, and by the time we were out, you know, people were hands up. You know, these are people who were sheepish and wouldn't even speak, and now they're saying, "I'm, you know, I'm proud of this, and I want this for my, I want this for my, or I want this for our community." So I would just say, you know, it has blown me away that once you give them, right, we're just not rolling up the blinds. Once you give them the keys to the door, you'd be surprised at what, you know, they feel ownership in it. And that's the biggest piece that has hit me so far, is the level of commitment and the level of need and passion from our families.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just, again, I'm very excited to hear what the future holds for this, and, you know, I think working together with our families is critical to student success, as I think everybody in the room does. So thank you very much.
First of all, thank you, everyone. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the hard work. I met a young lady a couple of years ago. I went to her office in Salem, she's at Salem State, Dr. Claire Crane. She, she had this model before, you know, up in the Ford School, and it was, I believe it was nationally recognized, and we had the first lady come and visit Dr. Crane. And I just sat there and listened, and we're, after coming from COVID, you know, we're still, we're still trying to, like, get our feet back on the ground, and a lot of families are hurting. This is really like, it's touching, it's personal, especially, I, I, I'm involved, I volunteer, and I work at the YMCA, and I see a lot of the families. And not to get off topic, but just, you know, when you mentioned about building the culture is important, like, I just, I really want to stand out, like, the work you've been doing, Mr. Fry, I've seen, I've talked to parents, and I really want to commend you on the work, and, and, and like you said, and, and, like you said, this is something that's coming out the shadows into the light. And I know you've been working hard, both of you principals have been working hard, engaging with families. And I know about the pantry, and this is like years ago, I know about your pantry, and you're, you're touching many, many lives, and it's, it's really important. The fact, too, that when you're interviewing families by family, like, that doesn't leave anyone out, because every, every student's important, every parent's important. Everyone deserves a voice on the table. And what you're doing is just so commendable. And after coming off COVID, like, it exposed so many inequities that's happening, and families are still struggling, you know, and I, and it's hard, you know, and this is like, really taking the ball and like, stop BSing and meeting families where they're at. Because, you know, when you're, when you're worried about housing securities, where you're going to live, I don't think education is the most important thing on the plate right there. No, but it is, because it is a game changer. But when you're struggling, I'm telling you, man, education is not important. Like, we're worried about how we're going to eat, where we're going to live, you know, and people are hurting. And what you're doing is you're meeting families where they're at. You know, the, I could just think about all the things that could come out of this, like, even with adult education, there's, there's parents that want to learn. They want a shot. Give me a chance to learn a trade. You know, think about the partnerships that we could do. Work with GE and other game changers, man. But just the fact that we have families engaging and all the community partners and the school district, we're supporting you, man. This is really, really touching. I know how, I, I know the work you've been doing. I, I seen it, I see the kids, and they all talk about, even parents I talk to, they're like, "Oh, I'm going to talk to you." "All right, Mr. Fry, I got your back." You know, and I know it's, it's personal and dear to you. I know, I know the work you've been doing up there, up in the Highlands, and I really thank you from the bottom of my heart, everyone involved, like, this is really truly like meeting families where we're at, and we need it, you know, and I commend you for your work. Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, when, when we were starting the interview process, we had sent home a flyer informing parents. We love our PTO, our very involved parents, but we knew it was very important to get every, get the parents that aren't always coming in our doors. So it's, you know, we would get some flyers back, and they're like, "I'm not sure what I signed." And that's when Rosa came in, and she's like, "Well, you signed, you're coming in to meet with the community school director." So we had a real, like, a very organic pool of parents coming in. So it was a really good experience.
As you're going, you're learning, you know what I mean? We're all, we're all learning as this goes along. And just think about the impact, how we can really, really combine social, emotional learning with this, you know? What's going on with these families? What's happening? Let's work together. Like, wow, thank you so much.
Yeah, and even just spreading the knowledge of community resources that are out there, you know, I was taught, that was part of our interviews, of, "Do you know of community resources? Do you need any? Can we educate you on them?" And I had a parent be like, "No, I'm all set." And then three weeks later, she came out to me in the schoolyard and was like, "Can you give me that Leo flyer?" And I was like, "Yeah, come on up."
Absolutely.
So it is, it is making an impact for sure.
I think that relationship building, I think our parents are feeling safe and welcome in our schools, right? There's no more, "Oh, you wait at the door. Come on in. We want to hear from you. We want, we've got family members here, right? But that feeling, that relationship has blossomed into trust, which that was evident."
I know, I was interviewing a mom, like, dodging Lego blocks, like, as her child's, I'm like, "I feel like I'm at home, really." Felt right at home.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Remember Castellanos, remember Gailey?
First of all, I'm just really grateful I didn't wear my Apple Watch tonight. My heart rate's like going. Coach, Coach Lenny does a good job. Remember Pedro for his powerful testimony always. And remember Dugan, I can't echo enough, I share the same emotions that my colleagues just mentioned. The community school framework, every time I see it, it shocks me, it hits me to the core, particularly around why we do this work. I believe when we see our students succeed, we will feel our why. I believe that. I believe the staff, the families, the children that we're impacting every day will feel that why. When you talked about Maslow hierarchy of needs, that's food, shelter, social, emotional learning, when you don't have those all in your life, in your ecosystem, your educational trajectory is threatened. As a first-generation, low-income Latino, I had that in my life. I had missing blocks, though, unfortunately. I didn't go through a community school. I didn't have that village. But what I had, though, I had a But what I had though, I had a lot of great Lynn Public School mentors. I had a lot of good people in my life and I'm one of the lucky ones. And the people that, the children especially that you're impacting, education is a team winner. I like, education is a team sport. Team sport and kids must win, I felt that. I feel it every single day. Every single day, your commitment is gonna change a child's life and it's gonna change your life. Because quality of work, that feel, that impact that you're looking for, it's gonna be right there. And what you're doing is so important, it's so greatly appreciated. I am so just rejuvenated and just so excited to see what's happened. I wanna thank United Way for always showing up for the city of Lynn. Because it's not just there, they show up. They show up. And it's amazing to see the leaders in Lynn Public Schools partner with United Way and to see the success that we're having and to continue that on, always my support. Thank you. That's not my elevator pitch, but it's close to it.
That's a long elevator ride.
We can trim it. I get permission for United Way to use it.
Member Gailey.
First of all, I worked in the middle school most of my career, middle and high school. One of the things I would talk to or ask our upper administration and what I witnessed from kids that are coming from a strong community school background is when they get into the middle school, they get lost. And I, I just don't know how are we gonna support these kids when they go on to the middle school? Making sure that their basic levels continue to be taken care of.
And the middle school onto a community school too.
No, I understand that. However, it's like, I got to see Claire Crane did a phenomenal job up there at Ford School. Donna Capola, member Capola is probably watching, hi Donna. She's probably thrilled because this is what she was pushing for, for 24 years to continue this effort. So that's the challenge I'm putting to you, I'm putting to Dr. Alvarez, is so that our students that are feeling empowered, the parents are feeling empowered and it's a wonderful, wonderful thing to have that. Let's continue it on in the middle school. Fifth grade is going into the middle school, sixth grade, that's where they get lost, that's where things sort of like break down. And I just wanna make sure we continue it so that it's like, they're gonna get into their senior year and they're gonna be empowered and then they're just gonna bring it right through the whole district, that's all. But that's excellent job, I'm very happy. How's the parking up in Highland, I mean Ford?
Oh, we have six spots at the fire station.
Are people using them?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just wanted to check on that, but, and, did you get your basketball hoops? Not yet, they're coming. All right, but anyways, that, that's my only concern about that, but excellent job. And Maslow's hierarchy has to be filled, always.
So, member Satterwhite, member Green.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm also excited about this as well. When I think about community resources, I think about the importance of accessibility, right? One of the things that came to mind was wondering if we could collaborate with the Lynn Publics Library, just to have access to educational materials and books and stuff. I think the problem is that because we only have one library, not everyone has access to it. So maybe even like, this is just throwing this out there, but once a week, the Lynn Public Library could share what they have to offer and then we could actually deliver those materials or something to them, to those who can't make it out to have access. So just something I was thinking about. Also, I think it's great that we look at local nonprofits, because that would be able to help offer more and also take the burden off the district, so, thank you.
Well, I'm going last, this is kinda hard. A lot of passion already, but seriously, thank you, all your passion came through so clearly and we're, Principal Fry, you said that you're lucky that we're on your team. No, no, we're the lucky ones, seriously, we really are. And I think a lot of times we, we think, we talk so much about parent engagement and think of these different strategies and, you know, using different technologies, but sometimes it comes down to just good old-fashioned reaching out and hard work and that's exactly what you're doing and I know it's not easy, so it's much appreciated. Two quick questions, because I was nod for the, here for the last year's presentation. Are there currently, or will there be, adult education opportunities that member Penya alluded to? And then the second one is, how do you go about like vetting and attracting community partners? I know, Principal, you kinda alluded that now, which is kinda self-sustaining, but just curious how that kinda works.
So, yes, so we, so I was a principal in Marblehead for 12 years and so I began by optimizing my social network that way. And I've reached out to Rotary, I was at Rotary Meeting today to meet some more folks. And then cold calls and chatting people up and asking the family members with whom I speak, who else should I talk to? What connections do you think I should, you know?
Old-fashioned, yeah.
That was one of my questions. But, you know, much of it is just face-to-face.
And that was part of the, that's part of it. You know, you know, when we first started this project, it has to be a partnership that works together. It has to be when I was interviewing Nina, like, this, we're not losing, right? All kids have to win. She's like, I'll do it, I'll call them, I don't, you know, give me a number, I'll call them, right? What are they gonna, right, they're just gonna, they can say no. And, you know, it, some people can say that and then some people do that. And she does that and you're starting to do that, like, or, you know, and so I think that's the power is in the work.
We commend each other very well with our skillset and the people we know.
Yep, knock on doors, make phone calls, invite people in. You know, anybody's invited, right? Our buildings are, I'm not gonna speak. Washington's open, right? The doors are open, right? Like, we are, you know, we are not, again, you've allowed us to be out of the shadows, the doors are open. We are who we are.
They're not propped to open though.
No, no, no. You gotta have pad, bed and all that. But, the point being, like, we, our schools aren't perfect, right? They are a reflection of the community. And if we can establish that, build that, complete that, right? Put that picture together, it's a beautiful thing. And so the doors are open and, you know, I often say to people, like, I'm not gonna talk to you about it, you gotta come, right? You gotta come see it, you gotta come feel it and, because that's what it is, it's a feeling. And you feel safe, you feel the happiness. People all the time come through, teachers actually smile in the hallways, right? They're happy to be there. And it's not an easy school to work in. It's not an easy population, it's not easy problems, everything is bigger and multi, and, you know, magnified, but we're doing the thing, right? We're doing the thing, so, we appreciate you guys.
And I've been a part of Lynn Public Schools for about two and a half years now. I was previously the homeless liaison for the district. So I just wanted to say that, you know, it is, the community does want to help and everyone wants to be involved. So it's, it's really not hard making those asks because the outcome is going to be so important.
I just wanna add, oh, sorry Sarah, I just wanna add how important the leadership of the school leader is in this strategy. For Amy and Anthony to really be abrasive of Nina and Amy and the work that they're doing, that makes all the difference because that could be a barrier to bringing in the partners, bringing in the families, bringing in the student voice. And, and they see the families as leaders, right? Like, the families are the assets to the community, so we know that our families intrinsically have the value, like, they're not just needy. Yes, we all have needs, but our families are leaders and I think the work that you all have been doing to elevate that family voice and create the opportunity for the family voice also speaks to why it's been so successful thus far.
And then just a bit of a kind of shameless plug here, I think this is also having your friends at United Way at the table of having decades and in some cases a century of partnership with a number of the nonprofits in the community is as Amy and Nina and Anthony and Amy are saying, we really need this or we need that and we're like, let me tell you about Leo, let me tell you about Girls Inc., let's bring in the Y, let's bring in the Boys and Girls Club, right? Why don't we really tap this network of community partners that so deeply cares about families, kids, neighborhoods and really joining us on this systems change journey? It's not just about repeating the same things we've been doing for decades because that's not working for kids. It's about really centering all of our community's needs and bringing the right players together. And yes, to adult education, so our parents want language instruction, they also want computer instruction, financial literacy, so I met with the New Americans Center and a meeting with Pathways to just find out what they're doing, what resources they have. But within our building, we have staff who are interested and willing to lead some of those learning experiences for adults also.
We got you.
Thank you so much for the tremendous presentation, for all the incredible work, for the whole team that's doing it, I know a lot of educators and, and community members. And I also would like to thank the families who you're working with, you know, opening their lives up to us to be a bigger part of them. So, thank you all so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next item is a ratification of votes, if any, taken in Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee. Member Gailey.
Hold on one second. In Buildings and Grounds, we made a motion and took a vote on Ingles Garden Improvement Plan for their project, food project, and they voted to move it to the fourth.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? I just have it. Next item is Communications and Information.
Thank you. So for communications, to keep all informed, we, I had briefly touched upon Rosetta Stone back during our dissent last meeting in December and just wanted to share with you, I'm not gonna read through the entire press release, it's gonna go up online for everyone to read, but just to touch upon the fact that the, the internal team has developed a process for the actual use of this program for students, for families, as well as all staff. So the different departments throughout the coming week will start releasing through Messenger and also putting up on our LPS website, you know, how to log into the portal, what are the instructions that they need to follow. And those instructions will also come to you as a school committee because you are, as part of the staff, will be able to also learn a language. It was covered and featured in, as part of an item article recently. And I just wanted to highlight for everyone that, you know, Rosetta Stone is research-based, it's grounded in evidence and it has been effective both for students that speak other languages as a primary language, as well as English as a first language. And so because of that, we feel that this initiative is extremely important. As far as how it touches our families, we just heard that community school presentation and, you know, there are intended uses in those settings, but there will be uses in our other school settings as well, where we intend to find ways to open computer labs so that parents can come into our schools and be able to use the program if they do not have access to a, you know, a computer at home or just simply want a quiet place, right, to work and actually engage in learning a language. So we're really excited about this project and initiative and thinking about two things in particular. The data that we've, that we know right now is that over the period of the next 10, 15 years, the majority of the United States will not only be black and brown, but speaking Spanish. And it is, yes, a disservice to our students who are monolingual and do not speak Spanish to not afford them the opportunity to learn, to have the ability to compete for jobs of the future, as well as our students who only speak, right, other languages besides Spanish to not help them accelerate their English acquisition skills. So I just wanted to bring that to the forefront as we move forward with this exciting project and how we're going to use it. And Kevin and I are going to learn Portuguese together, so just be ready for the upcoming school committee meetings. The next, the next communication is about Lego education and I'm really excited about sharing this one. This is, this is really the initial stage of how we're using Lego and STEM robotics in the after-school elementary programs. It's starting with fifth grade, not to say that over a course of time and, you know, and as we think about using Lego education and working with them as strategic partners that it won't be woven into maybe even some of the core of what we do in STEM instruction at the K through five level and in our curriculum. So, you know, we'll continue to think about that and how we can get that done. So those two will go up online tomorrow morning since they were released to you this evening. The next communication is on an internal audit of the Circuit Breaker, which is specific to special education. And where this came from is in doing a review and in a lot of internal discussions with our team and our special education department and with Dr. Kalella taking over sped, we think about, we have a lot of areas that we know are in need of reform, right, within our special education practices. And so to start and really think about where was the beginning of that, you know, reform that we need to do, Kevin and I were seeking to really establish and get a better handle on what were the, the financial mechanisms that we need to start reviewing to ensure that we are getting maximum reimbursements on, from the Circuit Breaker, meaning what were those reimbursements for students that require, right? Depending on the level of services that they require and were we actually getting those reimbursements? And so I wanna just walk you through some summary points. This is a summary of the actual audit, internal audit that we did. It was done by Dr. Nadine Exstrom and she has a background and is very well-known here in Massachusetts. She was a superintendent, executive director, specialized director for special education, student services. She's very, you know, very well-regarded and also worked with DESI for a period of time. And I put the link in there if you wanna look at her background as well. So the findings were really about a couple of things that were highlighted to us, the potential for significant reimbursements of missed opportunities within in-district as well as out-of-district special education programming. So, you know, the internal audit revealed that we are not seeking all of the reimbursements possible and that is something that we need to correct immediately. Then there was a discovery of gaps in the reporting system of who, what, and when services were reportable. So that means, for example, a nurse, a para, right, who provides direct services or in what setting, whether it was, you know, one-to-one or whether it was in a classroom setting. And so services provided by professionals were not consistently documented. The other opportunity for growth for us is really looking at the Student IEP Service Delivery Grid, who attended in-district special education programming. The information appears to be missing on which services should be included in an IEP to support Circuit Breaker reimbursement. So that's, you know, a significant shift in some of the practices that we need to look forward now into training those that are involved in developing IEP goals. Overall, we discovered that LPS really has yet to request reimbursements for all in-district students who require significant special education support, including medical services during the school day and extensively substantially separate related services to assess their education, to access their education. The last point was really that it was recognized that the district recently invested in a new student reporting system, which aligns differently from the IEP platform and that's potentially causing gaps. potentially causing gaps in providing required information to report Circuit Breaker reimbursements accurately. So some of the recommendations follow here on page two, and they're listed, we're working cohesively between the special education team, the business office, data assessment and accountability, to really look at the data that we do need, look at our Power School, look at the alignment and the communication systems that we currently have in place as we transition also into the EZ IEP system, which will facilitate some of this process, but we're not fully, we're not in full implementation of that at this point in time. The second thing is really protocol development, that's all again about systems and structures, right? And that really requires clear and explicit understanding of the, not just the data and information needed just for Circuit Breaker reporting, but also, again, development of IEP goals, what is an, what is an individualized education plan, right? We have them for a reason, and documentation of all of the services need to be on there in order for us to seek these reimbursements, so that's just part of it, but this also impacts, we understand, the education that students are receiving as special education students on a daily basis. So we take this with utmost seriousness and have started, Dr. Colella has started to look at this and, and really looking at what are those students with the highest matrix levels, and then working our way backwards, and it's going to take us a considerable amount of time, because we'll have to review IEPs, you know, conduct interim meetings, and all those annual meetings, right, will require the training of the, those that are writing the goals in order to make sure that we correct this problem in particular. The third point here was really just claims and making sure that we have clear protocols for out-of-district and in-district reporting, and so, you know, this is, this is just really following DESI's best practices and guidelines, which we have not always complied with, so. And then on the last page, it's really about, again, the IEP writing. The audit findings suggest that information currently needs to be added to Student IEPs, and there's a misalignment between the description of district programs and Student IEPs, and so what that tells us is, and there's some points here on, you know, where we're going to begin to really follow a corrective action plan, but one of our next goals is also to identify in the sequencing of programming for all students in special education, what is missing. We know clearly that we have gaps in some of our models, in terms of grade levels, in terms of support, in terms of even transitional services, and so that'll be some of our next steps in how we manage this corrective action, so this is in addition to, right, but this is what has also contributed to the, the tier-focused monitoring report that we keep hearing about, right, of all our violations as a district that have sort of accumulated over the last 10 years, so. I don't know if there are deputies want to add anything to this summary.
Member Casillas.
Thank you, Dr. Alvarez, for the deep explanation on what we're dealing with here. How far, when I look at the reimbursements, like how many years are we talking, are we eligible to get reimbursed?
So...
If we can.
So, this was one of the questions that Kevin and I had, we cannot modify prior school years, unfortunately, right? It's not even a question of, like, taking this back to DESI, there's things that have not been submitted, and what we can do is create the action plan to now start looking at everything mid-year and ensuring that the July submission is accurate. Probably at that point, I would say, Kevin, you can disagree with me, we'll probably be able to tell between the difference in what we submit in July, looking back at some of the years, and based on, like, the number of students in our population, we could probably predict how long and how much we have not been reimbursed for, but I couldn't tell you at this time.
Member Gailey.
Okay, so during campaigning over the last, I don't know, five or six years, I've had this one constituent come up to me, and he, you know, I work at DESI, and you're not getting all your Circuit Breaker money, and I never, ever understood what he was talking about, I couldn't figure it out, because I assumed that everything was in place, so now I just want to say how grateful I am that this happened and that we will get a full impact of our Circuit Breaker money in the future. Thank you, thank you all for that.
Kevin, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think, I think you summarized it, but as far as, you know, we can't go back, but I think, you know, we met with the consultant, and she's going to be working with us to look at the existing, there are probably going to be some more reimbursements we didn't normally apply for this year within the existing IEPs that we have in place, but the reality is, I think the superintendent, do we get the, all those IEPs fixed, or explaining all the different services, because that's how you gain the funds, by all those additional sorts, be spelled out within the IEP, that's going to take some time, so next year, as we move into next year, that should hopefully be resolved, and we'll be getting all the full claims we can, and the important thing is, you know, this is something can only be used, we use it to offset our tuition, which means it gives us more funds in our budget process to use elsewhere, because this reduces our tuition cost, and when we get through the budget, you'll see the number there, so hopefully that, this should be expected to go up next year to even more money than we normally get, so I'll be projecting that out, too.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick, thank you, Dr. Alvarez, just a quick question, I was curious, was compliance officer Charlie Gallo, like, involved in the audit as well?
No. No, this was purely a financial audit at this point in time. As I said, as we look at the models, right, in terms of programming, what does that mean? So if we look at, you know, the continuation of how we offer coach, task, from K to 12, just two examples, making sure that there are support services K to 12, that we have the proper supports in place for when students transition out of a program, right, things of that nature, that we know we are lacking at this time. So that, that, that will be a completely different process, this was purely financial, and so we, you know, there was a, the consultant went through, like, documents and financials that we provided to her from our SPED office.
I, I would just add that Dr. Colella is, is spending a great deal of time with the special education team, reviewing all procedures, process, systems, and we're actually, the Department of Ed is putting in a new IEP system statewide that will go into effect in September, and Dr. Colella is already in the process of getting trainings going and getting this, so this is a perfect time to get the calibration of everyone's practices the same, and she, they're working very hard to do that.
And Member Satterway, just to, and I'm not sure, you know, in terms of compliance and also knowing that Charlie, you know, has the, the lens from the lawyer perspective, right, our attorney Katie Meinholt has been spending a significant amount of time with the SPED team and with Dr. Colella, more than she normally would, because the support is needed at this time, and she's been supporting and reviewing, right, a number of things, including some of this process, because she is the, the attorney that we have that supports special education services, so I don't know if that answers your question.
And we are days away, maybe not even days, might even be hours away, from EZ IEP and Power School actually talking to each other and information being, you know, updated regularly, so today we were in a meeting, and I believe Dr. Colella said they have had a meeting this afternoon, I haven't talked to her to find out, are we there, but we're right there, very close.
This question's just around, just demographic, around the comps around the Commonwealth, right, how many, like, for, for our special ed operation capacity-wise, how do we compare, like, how many kids, I feel like Lynn Public Schools handles a lot of kids with IEPs, I feel like special ed is, is packed compared to other districts, and I don't know what the, the updated this year's numbers are, but could we pull that up to see the comps?
Yeah.
And see how they're, how other districts are also maybe affected by this?
We, we definitely could, you know, our, I know at the last reporting, right, we're still overrepresented in students that are in special education as compared to other districts, heavily overrepresented, and so, you know, the numbers, I remember that Dr. Dattuya presented at the last, at the final meeting that he was present at, haven't changed at this point, and so we're, we're really looking at, like, we've improved the number of IEPs that are in compliance, but that hasn't decreased the number of students, right, that are in special education, that are overrepresented as compared to students in other districts or even similar districts that have, you know, a similar minority population.
I ask that question because, to Member Gailey's point about someone from DESI kind of asking, like, kind of like hinting towards, oh, your, your Circuit Breaker money, it's, it's a little disturbing to hear that, and I, and I believe it, and to hear, I, I don't believe we're just the only ones, you know, I feel like it's a bigger issue maybe, but no.
I, I don't know that, the, certainly in, in talking to Kevin, you know, about some of our numbers and our financials overall, some of the things that, for me, just the number of students, the number, the amount of reimbursement, and the cost of our out-of-district, which is, you know, of, of student support, which is close to 15 million right now, were certainly some numbers that I thought that we needed to actually review and make certain that we are spending the way we're supposed to be spending, and so, you know, we'll, we'll continue to go through these numbers until we get it right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And last on our agenda is the superintendent's report. As we close the month of January, safety in our schools remains a top priority, we continue implementing and enhancing security measures to ensure a safe and supportive learning environment, our project with Verkata is underway with wiring and a number of components of the phases that we will share at a later time. We're currently in that first phase of the ongoing investment of that advanced security technology, and these are all obviously critical components of our comprehensive approach to safeguarding the well-being of students, staff, and faculty. This past week, we had an incredible, incredibly successful meeting with our high school students, the Centring Youth Voices has 10 students from our, all of our high schools that are now sitting as my advisory board, student advisory board, they, we, they are just incredible. So in the spirit of shared governance and amplifying the voices of students and teachers, we had a robust conversation on physical safety and belonging on our high school campuses, student voice is obviously crucial in shaping our educational practices, and we're actively working to create platforms for students to express their perspectives and contribute in decision-making processes, processes. My student advisory group comprises of 10 students in grades nine through 12, they are articulate, insightful, honest, and a very observant group, they're very, they're actually brilliant. They will support us, the adults, in developing better systems and structures for our district, the intent is really to enhance and improve the student experience, because although we work for students, we rarely ask them what they think about process, policies, and our procedures. Our staff of Color Affinity Group has partnered in mentoring with that student advisory board, and two of our faculty members were present during that meeting, also taking notes and really sitting in as role models as we had that robust discussion. Similarly, the input of dedicated teaching staff and school leaders is invaluable, and through our collaborative efforts, we're empowering committees, fostering an environment where educators play a central role in curriculum development, school initiatives, we spoke about the Program of Studies today, providing feedback on how also policy affects students and the daily operation of schools. We're reviewing several policies that significantly impact the student experience, I shared this with the student advisory group as well, and they were all in agreement that these were things that we needed to look at immediately. The grading policy, a comprehensive one, dress code, maximum age of school admission and attendance. We continue to focus on improving classroom instruction through rigor, our, our curriculum department focuses on district prioritization and disparities in data between students who are performing and those students' subgroups who are underperforming as compared to their peers. Our leaders are implementing the MTSS, the multi-tiered systems of support in our schools, and we continue to work out and enhance that through a number of areas, so attendance, academics, behavioral, and social, emotional spaces. The first tier really encompasses that high-quality evidence-based instruction for all students, while second tier offers targeted interventions for those needing additional assistance, and the third tier really involves the intensive individualized interventions for students required, requiring specialized support. That MTSS enhances academic achievement and fosters positive school culture by promoting early intervention, collaboration among educators, and data-driven decision-making processes that ensure that students receive support necessary to succeed. Our innovation team has started an exciting project, the design of a STEAM six-through-12 model at this time. This exciting work is certainly needed to begin our district shift to innovative implementation of the STEAM model in schools, transforming education by fostering creativity, critical thinking, and interdisciplinary learning. The STEAM six-through-12 model will include specific courses and enrichment activities that allow students to use the science inquiry model, waiting for Member Gailey to say something. STEAM education inspires students to explore real-world problems and develop solutions collaboratively by integrating cutting-edge technologies, project-based, and project-based learning approaches, maker spaces equipped with advanced tools and materials that provide students with hands-on experiences, allowing them to design, experiment, and prototype. Moreover, connecting arts with STEM disciplines enhances creativity and encourages students to approach problem-solving holistically. So we're embracing an innovative STEAM model as we prepare students for the demands of technology-driven, a technology-driven future that cultivates a culture of curiosity, adaptability, and innovation that extends beyond the classroom. Through the STEAM education, schools empower students to become forward-thinking contributors to a rapidly evolving global landscape, and all of that will be, right, where we will see changes as we go through that Program of Studies. Also, the innovation team has been working with the high school principals to use design thinking in developing themed pathways that are relevant and engaging for students. One example includes the modernization of course offerings in the IT pathway at both classical and English, including courses and standards that teach data science, financial technologies, artificial intelligence, and more, a more robust cadre of coding courses that will provide students with competitive, the competitive edge needed in today's business workforce. A vision over time for this pathway is that students will be able to combine skills from several disciplines. An example of a project that encompasses many skills for an excellent product is the website creation, great websites entail coding, for example, fine arts, photography, digital editing, and content creation, and developing all these skills in these areas can include highly engaging courses like... like gamification, where students shift from becoming the video game lovers to the video game producers, right? So whether they're front-end or back-end users makes, will, will give them those tools. LPS can look forward to a district-wide competitions to display student work. We're thinking about esports and how we can actually, um, have that through our six-through-12 programs. Uh, at Lindtect, we're working on the expansion of student seats, not only in existing pathways, but also looking to expand programming to include the exciting area of biotechnology. And we're really focusing on that for school year '25, so opening that in the fall. Um, we're visiting spaces and investigating specifications for high-tech equipment that students need, and the IT and biotechnology pathways are just two innovative designs and curricula that will integrate into our high schools over the next two years. We look forward to a more complete update in March, as we shared earlier, um, during Molly's presentation. Uh, I want to close this meeting by thanking all of our students, teachers, leaders, support staff, and parents who believe in the great work that we're doing together. We'll continue to show up daily with the incredible willingness and disposition to engage in culture change and student-centered spaces that will prepare all students for a promising tomorrow. Thank you.
Senior for their items?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all fair?
Aye. All right.